Into the open meeting. And we existed executive session at 6:44 PM. We do have a motion coming out of executive session, which I'm going to ask Christine to go ahead.
I move that we approve the 2020 to 2022 superintendent contract.
Do I have a second?
A second.
And Tari is going to pull up the sheet. For tally and vote. Thank you. All right, starting with Alec.
Yes.
Alex.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Jeremy.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Kelly.
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining. Kristen.
Yes.
Thank you. Lisa.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Rosemary.
Yes.
Teresa. I'll come back. Tim?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. Teresa abstaining. Tim?
Yes.
Tari?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So that will pass. And we will move on to the next item on our action items this evening. So I am going to ask for Tari to move on to the first item, which is the pre-K to 12 timeline, as you saw in your packet. And she's going to give us a little bit of an update. I wanted to just first thank that committee, which was Jonathan, Jeremy, Tari, and Tim, who met twice and did quite a bit of work in between. I know some of the other board members attended, as well as community members, and they pulled together quite a good bit of work for us and recommendations to consider this evening. So I'm going to ask Tari to give a brief overview. And then when board members ask questions, what I do want to encourage us to think about, because we've been practicing how to move back and forth from committee to full board work, is we want to make sure we're not asking them to summarize everything that they did, but more gather any information that we would need to vote on the recommendations that they've brought before us this evening. So, thank you. And Tari, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I I know that you've probably read the report, so I don't know if I really have much news to report beyond that, except to say that I was really pleased with the collaborative nature of our conversation, and it felt like we all really worked to hear each other, and there were so many points of agreement, and that was actually a really great feeling, I think, I presume for most of us. And it was also even great to have, we had several board members who participate, who joined the meeting, not as committee members, but as audience members, and we had time to hear from them and from the public who joined the meeting too. So it was the nice thing about a small format like that is how much, you know, much more almost organic conversation you can have, and it, so it was a great process. So tonight, we're hoping that you will approve the timeline that we put together. We're also hoping to have some conversation to understand what kind of information the board will need to have in order to make a decision in the fall about the seventh and eighth grade merger at Crossbrook. And then we're hoping to ask you to charge the pre-K 12 committee with putting that list together, sharing it with administrators, asking the administrators to finalize that data package by our first meeting next in the, in the fall. And then lastly, we should probably talk about if we want to, how we want to organize the community engagement for the fall, but that's that's sort of after the other things, so. Maybe we could just start with the timeline, if anybody has questions.
So one of the things we figured was we would go through the recommendations, and then we would do the voting all at once. But if I'm not hearing any questions on the timeline, I would suggest we move on to the next piece. Oh, Christine.
Are you ready for a motion to approve the timeline, or no?
I think what we might do is just go through the, the recommendations, because there could be things that overlap, and then we could just do the voting all together in terms of the recommendations.
Okay.
Kristen, do you have a question? Or comment?
I just had a question. Is this the part where I thought in the leadership report, or maybe not, that we were gonna, if there are any question or additional information the board wanted to know? Is this the point, or is this, is that further down in the conversation?
I think that's next or third, but yes, we will get there. Thanks for the reminder there. So I think, yeah, that was just in terms of the timeline and kind of the dates and what's in the timeline so far. I know it doesn't go too far into the year, and I think we're at a really good starting point. Tari, do you want to move us on then to the next recommendation?
Yeah, so that, that sounds great. So does any, nobody has any questions about the timeline? Like, just to be clear, this big, there is a big decision in here, and everybody's, everybody's clear about that, that this timeline says we're going to just try to tackle the seventh and eighth grade merger at Crossbrook next fall. It says that, assuming that, you know, the COVID fallout doesn't require us to take more steps next fall, that we're just going to look at seventh and eighth grade next fall. So everybody's, everybody's okay with that?
All right, I see Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, I mean, this is not a super specific question, but as I'm reading through the timeline, I I just keep coming back to when in this pre-K through 12 process are we going to look at the other side of the equation? So I hear a lot about how we're looking at consolidation and cost savings, and I do think that that's super valuable, you know, I'm for it. We can, I want to look at that. I also really think we need to start the conversation about how are we going to identify where the holes are in our system that are contributing to our declining enrollment and, and work to fix them. And so I think in part, included in the pre-K through 12 design, we need to be looking at both of those, and I just, I'm so like, part of the reason I wanted to be on the board, to be honest, is to start having that conversation, and I just can't figure out when it's going to happen. So I want to bring it up now as we're talking about the timeline, I guess.
Tari, do you want to address that? I know that's something that's coming in with the recommendations for summer work.
I think one of the things that we've talked about in our committee, and I feel like Tim has helped us frame this really nicely, or at least he's helped frame my understanding, I think better, that this isn't everything you're talking about, Lisa, but it might be a part of it, which is trying to not just look at essentially the negative reasons that we'd be making changes, but looking at the positive reasons we'd be making changes, and some of the positive outcomes that are not just bottom line oriented. So as we started to make a list of information for this, what we just kept calling a data package, we did try to start thinking about pieces of questions we could ask that would help us see see the positives and the, the benefits beyond just, you know, cost savings. Also, but in terms of what are the other gaps in our district? That, that wasn't the charge of our committee. Ours was really to put together this timeline. That feels to me like a really important question for our, our ongoing thinking in our retreat and our, essentially our board prioritizing those things. And it feels like something we all keep circling back to, actually. So I sort of feel like the timing is really great on that, but I don't know if it's actually really part of this section of the conversation.
And so just to be super clear, is that something I should put as an agenda request? Like, what's the process for trying to get this in part of the discussions, I guess? It's my question.
Could you be more specific? I mean, could you, could you name something? I mean, name, name a gap where?
Yeah. Well, I'm really interested, it sounds like in my conversations with, with Bridget the other week, it sounds like the, the process of formalizing exit interviews for students, as students leave our system, is becoming more formalized, and it sounds like maybe information has been collected in the past. And so to be, have the opportunity to look at that and figure out the trends of why people are leaving, and then to start to create actions to, to remedy that, and to try to figure out how to at least contain the defining enrollment. And it's a super big project. I'm not saying it's like a simple, like, or just be like, oh, this is what's happening, let's just fix that. But it's work that really has to be done if we're not going to just end up in a downward spiral. So so in my head, as we're talking about pre-K through 12 planning, that's included in it. It's like, there's two parts of the equation, and it's all part of planning what our pre-K through 12 is going to look like. And so I don't, that's, that's the best I can do. Sorry, I'm getting super specific.
Or Tari, go ahead.
So I would just, I would say that in this case, the charge of the board was for us to figure out next steps for the pre-K 12 plan that was identified in the November 13th meeting. And so so in terms of how to make sure the board is talking about this, I think it's a gender request, but I think it's actually, we're going to come up later with this idea of the fall retreat. And so maybe that's, Lisa, that seems like the avenue probably for that. So for tonight, it's, or for this moment in the board meeting, it's just the timeline.
So Tari, maybe the other thing is, if you could just give us a quick overview of the other areas that you're looking for tonight, and it was
Okay, so that this
helps the folks tuning in. And then, as I call on other folks, if there's more than one item that they want to comment on, that might help.
Okay, so I feel like one of the big questions then is this idea that I think that Kristen was referencing. What information are we going to need to have in order to make a decision? So one of the challenges last fall was sometimes people feeling like, well, I don't, I can't make a decision unless I have this information. So what we're trying to do is basically make the list now, before the summer, so that the administrators have a chance to put it all together, so that by the time we come back in the fall, we already have the information we believe we'll need. A lot of this are, we expect is to update work that's already been done. So a ton of work has been done, but it wasn't all put together in one packet, because it didn't all happen at once, or we'd, we'd realize we had a new set of questions, and so then we'd get those answers. So in the report, we tried to link to some of the documents we already had, so you could sort of see, like, this is the sort of information we have. And we tried to list some of the questions that we would hear often last fall, that people did not feel that they knew information about. So I don't know if you have that report in front of you, but it was things like, we heard a lot of concern about class size. So we'd like to hear not only what class size is, but what are the implications of that? How will shared spaces be used? So at this stage, even though they're not final plans, the administrators have talked through some possibilities. So they would have more information they could share with us, that kind of thing. We also talked a bunch about, you know, before, when we looked at these numbers, we were always using it. We were always thinking about it with the assumption there'd be a bond in a couple of years. But it does not feel like the board is thinking there's going to be a bond in the next couple of years. So we would want to be looking at any numbers we're looking at as indefinite, you know, or at any changes to the building as not bond related. So that's a, that's a different framing than we've had before. I'm just reading this out loud, because I know that probably not all the audience members have this in front of them. So there was comparison of each school's current programming, which we've seen before, but then updating that with what would the new school be able to offer in terms of programming? We have some transition planning that's been done already that wasn't, hadn't happened last fall that we can share, and we could update anything new. What would the physical changes be across the block? How would they get paid for? That could include things like pictures of an annex if it's necessary, which previously that was the recommendation. How would it be used? How's it going to be paid for? What does the money in the first year? What's the money in the second year? That gets me to some tenure cost projections with and without the merger. So we tended to just talk in terms of the first one or two years, when we talked about before, but it'd be great to see it 10 years out, because a lot of the savings will come back every year, that kind of thing. There was a lot of questions about bus routes. Now, that's not something we might, we might not know that yet, but we might be able to get an inkling. So maybe we'd have more information about bus routes, length of time on busing. If nothing else, some of it is out putting it all together in one packet, so that anybody who has questions can find the document and, and answer their question. How would the merger make our district stronger? And are there downsides? If so, what might they be? And then, so it's that kind of stuff. So Kristen, maybe, do you already know you have some extra questions? You could like, start us off.
I'm going to ask just real quickly, what I, just to share what happens next is, our goal is to give this committee enough information that they're going to have one more meeting likely next week to synthesize what they hear tonight. And then we would ask also for a charge for them to then pass that work off to the admin team, who can prepare a report to us at the end of the summer. So, Kristen, go ahead.
Well, I was also going to see if the timeline could be projected so that advanced members or the other people could also see it. Plus, I'm trying to bring it up on my phone, so it was super small. But my question is, is if that merger goes through for the seventh, eighth, how do we justify the empty space at Harwood Middle School? Since there's no money to, I'm assuming there would be no money, because there's no bond. What would we do with that space? And how would we rationalize it to the community that there's this partially empty building, but yet there's annexes at Crossbrook, I'm assuming, or potentially, and so how do we do that with the community? And what, and what would that space at Harwood Middle be used for? If anything? That was one of them. And then my second question is, is back when last fall, when we were given all the scenarios and the DC scenario was moved forward, just make sure that I'm correct in thinking that this, that fifth and sixth was said to be moved so that we could accommodate space for additional classrooms, and, and then we also wouldn't disrupt art and music. Is that correct, sort of?
So I think what I'm going to try to keep us on right now is questions. And so I think that's a good question of what, what is the five and six? And
So my question, though, is if, for example, you know, Mecca doesn't, or now, as it's called, doesn't come back in the fall, that leaves an empty classroom. So is there that potential that that part could be looked at again? And that's it for me.
Great. Thank you. Teresa, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm I'm, I'm going to kind of take off what Lisa was talking about. I mean, everything we're talking about and have talked about historically feels very much like it's a finance and facilities conversation, right? And with a little bit of, maybe we could add some more programming. I want to know how we're going to make a better school? Like, how are we making this district better? Like, what does this do to make the district better? I don't know that we can answer that in, by the fall, but that's what I want to know, you know? What kind of opportunities are we going to provide kids that are different than what we can provide today? What kind of growth academically and socially, emotionally are we going to be able to provide the kids? What kind of equity are we going to provide the kids that's maybe different? How are we going to both, how is this going to improve the community and engage the community? Economically, attractiveness, you know, to, you know, attracting more kids to our district? What are the trade-offs? There's definitely trade-offs. There's going to be a trade-off in the fifth and sixth grade at Crossit. You know, they're, they're going to be dwarfed by the seventh and eighth graders in the, in the terms of the size. You know, what does that look like for them? Are they going to run into them in the cafeteria, things like that? So what are the trade-offs? You know, I always, you know, go back to kind of the business speak of a SWOT analysis. What are the strengths of the plan? What are the weaknesses of the plan? What are the opportunities of the plan, and what are the threats of the plan? And, you know, I, I think we should really be looking at that. And then I had the same question that Kristen had about, what do we do with the space?
Great, thank you. Alex.
So I guess my, in terms of the timeline piece, somehow my Mike, can you hear me?
Yep.
My, my phone cut out in the timeline piece. I, I am fine with the timeline and agree with it. The only caveat I would say is, as people keep reminding us, we are in unprecedented times with COVID, and I'm fine with just looking at the seven, eight, but if all of a sudden we have no money, we may be looking, we may have to look at things more than the seven, eight. So I mean, I think what we agree to right now is fine, but I think none of us have any idea what's coming down the pike for us financially. So I, I think we all have to have an open mind to the fact that things can change. We might not have the money to finance what we need to. So that would be my piece on the timeline. And then I guess I would just say that I think we should be careful saying that this is just about money and mergers. I think from the very beginning, the, the point of this, from I think my perspective, has been coming up with a pre-K to 12 plan that will benefit our students and offer them more opportunities and growth and learning and ways of connecting early. We've heard from our students about how they think that's valuable. So I, I think we just need to be careful that we also recognize that the administration, as well as the board, has really prioritized that for our students, making sure that, that people understand that the, the goal is to offer more for our students, and this is one way to do it. So that's just, that's all.
All right, I'm going to go to Christine and then to Lisa.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Alex. I think one of the, I, I think I'm, I support this timeline, and I really appreciate Tari taking the time to put it together, and the idea of taking some of what we have done to date and, you know, updating it or adding important comparative information that we need to help with the decision-making and, and with the buy-in. And for me, you know, the, the money is important, you know, obviously, but the really important thing is, is getting to equity. And the longer I go and the more I reflect on it, there's a, there's a real lack of equity five through eight in our schools. And, you know, equity was, was one of the most important aspects. That's, that's one of the reasons that we did this merger. So I, I think it's time that we start to address that, and if, if, if we start to address it by putting us in, ourselves in a position to add programming where it's deficient, then, you know, that might start to fill some of those perceived holes that some people see, and you know, give us more strength in our cohort groups and a more positive experience in their schools, and, you know, build more robust school communities that are more cohesive as the students move through, and, you know, a stronger academic and social experience for all. No. It's, it's not just about money.
Okay. Thanks. And then I want to make sure if I'm, that we capture any more questions. So I'm going to go to Lisa, and I see Kelly. So Lisa, Kelly, and then Teresa.
Yeah, I had a question about, um, I think one of the lessons we learned really loud and clear last time was, was the importance of engaging the staff early in the process. And so I see in September, a public engagement activity with staff for parents and taxpayers. I don't see, yeah, I don't, maybe I'm missing it, but I don't see where we're having the conversation and bringing the, the staff to the board table like we did in the, or like you guys did, I guess, in the early spring, and how important that was to do, or we decided it needed to be done earlier, and I don't see it here. And because I'm very curious as to whether, what, what the admins take is on going through with the merger without bond, because I think a lot of the feedback we heard was don't do this yet, because I don't want us to be stranded in annex buildings without a bigger plan in place. And so I'm just curious if that, the mindset has shifted, or if it stays the same.
Sure. And I know that the group still had some more work to do in terms of the engagement part of the timeline as well, or how, and we think they put some placeholders, but like you're saying, it's vague at the moment. Kelly, did you have a hand up? You're muted.
I'm here. Sorry, my, my cursor's not working anymore, so. I have kind of a few, a few questions. To be piggyback on Lisa's around the staff engagement and stuff, I was thinking about the public and what kind of, say, is the public going to be having in on this as well? The other question I had was, what's the long-term goal? Like, what is the final, what, what, what is the vision that people are seeing long-term from here? Not just one year, two years, you know, three years, but what is the ultimate end game? And then how will gathering more information change, or will it change any decisions that are made? And then my last question is, what's the anticipated length of time that the students would be in pods? So if there's not the funding and there isn't the space, then how long do we see students being in these pods or annexes, or whatever it is you want to be calling them? So it, it just seemed that the public in general was not in support of the seventh and eighth graders moving to Crossit at all. So that's, that's all I have.
Teresa, you have some more questions?
Yeah, it's actually just a comment. You know, Christine, you, you talk a lot about a really, you know, like, important stuff, like, are we going to have more programming and things like that? But we have to know exactly how. How is that going to happen? And so all the things Christine just mentioned would be awesome. But we need to know exactly how they're going to happen. If that is not documented, no one can sign off on it. So how does that happen? That's what people mean by a plan, not just that it's possible, exactly what we're going to do. Let's document it. Let's get it down.
Thanks. So anything else in terms of questions that you would want this committee to consider as they package this for, for the summer? Because the goal would be that each of us, when we come in in August, has the kind of information that we would need. Understanding that it's a balance. It's not always that everyone's individual questions get answered exactly, but that the broad topics that we hear, especially that we hear repeatedly, are addressed and touched on. And so Tari and I have been taking notes, and clearly with four of us on the committee, I'm trusting them to take what they've heard and, and move it forward, whether it's finding information that has already been there and has been buried, or whether it's asking for updates and some of the new information that we need. Teresa, another item?
I just want to ask like a sanity check here. Do we really think we can do this by ourselves? You know, there's a lot of people get paid as professionals to do this. This is a lot of work in order to do it right. And I really, once again, I'm going to recommend that we think about engaging a third party. You know, we're, we're a team of part-timers, and I respect all the time people put in. But I really don't want to get into another situation where we're just putting a lot of work in and not moving forward. I'm sure a lot of people feel that way, right? And so I just, I don't know that we can, we as part-timers, non-experts have the capability and the capacity to be able to do this and do this really well for our students. And I, I think we, as a board, owe it to our district to consider a third party.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would just say that it isn't our job to do it. It's the admin team's job to bring us this data, and I, I think, you know, I would hope that they would tell us if they felt like they couldn't do this. It's our job to read the data and analyze it and see whether we agree with the data that's presented to us. So and I don't think anybody's in a position to spend any extra money right now. We don't, you know, we are sort of short on cash, to put it mildly, and especially if we're going to start considering big investments in things like anti-racism, which we need to do. We need to be thoughtful about how we're spending our money. And then I had one other thing I was going to say. I don't remember. But anyway, that's just my thought.
Okay, I do want to move us on. It's 7:16, and I want to be sure that we take the action items that this committee needs to move this forward. So I think, Tari, that we would probably be ready for those items, unless I'm missing anything from the board. Okay. So Tari, the first would be approving the timeline developed by a pre-K committee for next steps in pre-K to 12 planning. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further board discussion on the topic? Okay. Seeing that this is the procedural timeline, I'm going to keep this to the board vote and ask if there's anyone opposed. All right, hearing no opposition, then this will pass unanimously.
Caitlin, I'd like to abstain, please.
Thank you, Teresa. Okay.
I, I'm voting no.
Thank you, Kristen. Okay.
And is this a public comment vote, Caitlin, just out of curiosity?
I indicated no, given that this is a board process piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caitlin, I'll vote no, too.
Okay, so I have a no. I want to make sure everyone's is considered correctly. I have Kelly and Kristen as no, and Teresa as abstaining. Okay, thank you. Then we have another piece, which is tasking the pre-K to 12 committee with developing a list of data to be updated and or added to a seventh, eighth grade merger data package. to a seven, eighth grade merger data package based on the board discussion at the 6/24/2020 meeting, for them to then share with the admin team. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further board discussion on this motion? Okay. Oh, Kristen, sorry. No?
Caitlin, my hands up.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I saw hands up and down. Lisa, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, so just to be clear, is this assuming that of all the questions that have been brought up today would be included in what they're asking the admin team to, um, to prepare?
Tari, I'll let you speak to that as well. I think what typically we try to do with this sort of thing is synthesize the discussion. So I pretty much wrote everything down. That said, some, some questions are going to be, be able to answer in a data package. And that's what we're focused on the most. I think others could be captured and say, these are some of the other things that we know the board is interested in. That may not be possible in a data package over the summer, but we also don't want to lose that thinking or interest. But Tari, do you have anything else to add in terms of your committee's process here?
So, and committee members, if you think this is wrong, just speak up. But I assumed that we'd have a conversation similar to the way we did it already. So when we first started this conversation a few weeks ago, we began by recalling what was the board table discussion. And then we used that group discussion to try to set some, you know, kind of like, uh, I'm sorry, almost like walls or boundaries or guidelines for ourself as we continued our planning. So I would assume that we'd do something like that where we, we'd go back over what we heard. I, I took notes on what everybody said and we'd sort of say like, this feels like the thing that we need to put in the data package. But I don't think I would promise that, my guess is that not every single question that got raised tonight would be asked for in that because it's, it's not all quite the same. But we would be looking for answers that, I, I think as a group, that we felt, we're trying to answer as many people's questions as possible because our, our goal has been to try to move things forward for everybody. What do you think, gentlemen? Is that a fair answer?
Yeah, I think so. And it'll be another, I encourage people to sit in on the, on the meeting if, if you have concerns that would make you, your, your concern short shrift, although we will earnestly try not to do that. But, um, yeah, um, come and join the meeting. We were hope, we, I heard perhaps next week, but we'll be looking at everybody's schedules.
So we, you haven't scheduled that yet, but it will be coming soon. Teresa, another comment on the motion?
Are we gonna give the community an opportunity to ask questions that would go in the data packet?
I don't think so for this one. This is the, the information that the board members feel that they need in order to make a decision coming forward. That accompanies the decision we just made around the timeline, which does include community engagement. So I think what we've tried to do is, in the past as a board, is to say, all right, what information do we need? And sometimes that information includes public input, specific staff input, admin input. But ultimately, this vote is a vote of the board. And so we want to make sure that the board members have that constituents who are listening. If you're hearing things that are not here, then you should be letting us know and saying, I really hope that you have X information in order to vote. But again, this is, this is ultimately a board decision and it's not a, a ballot vote for our constituents.
I may say though, many of the questions that we came up with were questions we heard from the community. Like the, the ones that were included in your packet were things we heard repeatedly. So we, we, we were trying to think, maybe we missed some, but we were trying to think very much about what information to the community still feel like it needed and hadn't had before.
Alex?
Yeah, I mean, I was just gonna say, uh, I, I, I think we shouldn't forget how much community engagement actually has happened and that a lot of the information that's already in there is based on community engagement. And I think, Tari, you guys as a committee did a great job trying to capture additional questions that came up through the whole budgeting process and discussion. So I, you know, I think as board members, we've all been processing a lot of community questions and information. And I appreciated your efforts to contain that in the report. And I guess I would here put in a plug for committee work and allowing the committee to do their work. And so I, having, I mean, I think the best thing we can all do is if that we have significant concerns or questions, go to the committee meetings. And if we don't, read the packets really closely before they come out the next meeting and bring concerns to the people on the committee before the meeting. I think, you know, if we want committee meeting, committee work to function, I think that's, this is the best way to do it. So I was really impressed by the information you guys managed to put together in a short amount of time. And I'm sure you will figure out how to move us forward come the fall.
Okay, so I think we should be ready to vote here. Again, we're tasking a committee, so I don't see this one as needing public comment. But I will ask if there's anyone opposed to the motion on the table. Teresa, are you opposed or standing?
I'm abstaining, please.
Okay, thank you. Everyone else is recording as a yes, unless I hear otherwise? Okay, thank you. That will pass. And I think, Tari, your committee has one more motion for us to consider. Would you read that out for us?
To task the administrative team with updating and expanding the data package related to the seventh and eighth grade merger at Crosser Brook to present to the board at the August 26, 2020 board meeting.
Do I hear a motion? And do I have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone opposed? Teresa? Are you opposed or abstaining?
I'm opposed.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else opposed or abstaining to the motion? Okay, thank you. This will carry. So again, I want to thank you all for this work tonight and especially to the committee. And we will look for their next meeting in the pretty near future. And then the report that would be coming out at the end of the summer, our next meeting being August 26. So we have another action item on the table this evening. And it also relates to the next discussion item. So I put those together very intentionally, given that we have Sarah Schoolcraft and Tom Break with us. And I want to thank you both for joining us this evening. And what I want to do is give them an opportunity to discuss their current thinking about the anti-racism efforts in HUSD and the specific recommendation that was in our board packet as, and well as anything else that they would like to share. Sarah and Tom, I just first want to say thank you for stepping up. I know that even in just the past two weeks, this is controversial, very heated work. And you all are very busy after a very difficult school year. I think it shows how committed the two of you are, as well as your teams, that this is becoming a higher and higher priority in our district and certainly for our board. But I just want to say that for the two of you to step forward and put yourselves out there when it's a very tough topic to take on. And we know we have a lot of work to do here in the Harwood district. I want to thank you first. And then I want to give you time to share your thoughts. So go ahead, please.
Appreciate that, Caitlin. Thank you. Sarah, why don't you, why don't you jump in and go first? Because it seems like we're gonna put these together, the task force and the flags. And then you're only voting on the flags tonight, is my understanding right?
I think so, Tom. And it's felt like perhaps getting the framing and the bigger picture would make more sense before just diving into the specific action.
Okay.
Great. Yes, um, thank you, Caitlin. And thank you all for the opportunity to come tonight. So I'm Sarah Schoolcraft. I'm a first-year assistant principal at Thatcherbrook Primary School. I'm also a Duxbury resident and a parent of three. And as Caitlin introduced, Tom and I, and you've all seen, Tom and I kind of put our names in the ring to commit to helping to organize and, and coordinate some of this work that we have ahead of us. After further reflection, discussion, and feedback on our initial statement on the scope of the HUSD Task Force for Anti-Racism, we've decided to focus and refine our work. There are other groups in our area focusing directly on community interests and efforts. And TIFAR will work in coordination with these groups, representing and focusing directly on the opportunities to learn and grow in our schools. TIFAR will have representation from each of our schools and will liaise with the Waterbury Area Anti-Racism Coalition and the Mad River Valley Anti-Racism Initiative on the greater community interest. There is already some promising work that has been started at the grassroots level in our schools. And this task force will ensure coordination and consistency of the efforts across the HUSD, with an emphasis on defining appropriate curriculum for pre-K 12 student learning, scheduling professional development for staff learning, facilitating parent education, firming up culturally responsive school systems and policies, bringing student voices into the process in developmentally and culturally appropriate ways, and collaborating with community partners. Tom and I, I think I can speak to Tom, that we are not claiming to be experts at all. We, you know, acknowledge that there is much work to be done personally, in groups, professionally, and, you know, within our different places and roles in the community. And we're, you know, we're ready and willing to do that. And we want to do so in a collaborative and cooperative way with stakeholders. You know, Maya Angelou said, do the best you can until you know better. And then when you know better, do better. And so that is kind of part of the inspiration for this work. We feel strongly that this will be a big leap forward in the HUSD efforts towards helping to grow the next generation with an anti-racist worldview. Thank you.
And let me, let me slip right to the, um, the request to fly Black Lives Matter flags at the seven school campuses. You know, we, we kind of brainstormed some, some reasons. Number one, it's, it's a tangible symbol of our commitment to anti-racism work and the Black Lives Matter movement. It's a concrete symbol that this work is beginning with lots more to come. And I hear, I think as Maureen just said, you know, there's concern that this effort isn't authentic and we're kind of jumping on the bandwagon. But, you know, there's a lot going on right now after the George Floyd incident and, and, you know, it's, you could question that for, for all the, the movements and the, the energy, I think, across the nation and across the world. You know, is it authentic or is it just, you know, making a, a political statement? And we wanted to say it's authentic. Time will tell, obviously. Promoting dialogue amongst our community members. Sarah and I were at the rally protest in Waterbury a couple of weeks ago. And I put one of the signs that my wife held up in front of our house and it just said, Black Lives Matter. And I've had some interesting conversations with community, with the neighborhood members walking down as some water in the lawn in the last couple of weeks. And, um, you know, I, I think it's just raising the conversation is part of what we want to do. It's timely. You know, we're in a different era now post the George Floyd incident. The world's flying the flag. The State House is putting, you know, Black Lives Matter on the street in front of the State House. English Premier League teams in the soccer league in England are all wearing Black Lives Matter flags instead of the name on the back of their jerseys for the first couple of weeks of this new season. And others, other Vermont school districts are raising the flag at all their schools also. Raising the flag continues the work that students have dialogued around it at Harwood. There was conversation maybe a year ago or so with some staff members and students on, you know, should we raise the flag? And it was a different climate politically and emotionally, I think, at that time. The admin team unanimously thinks it's a good idea. And we didn't want the whole summer to go by without a show of commitment to this movement. And while we can't congregate around the flagpole now for reasons of COVID and social distancing, we are, or we will plan something to acknowledge the raising of the flag with students when we return to school in the fall. So those are our reasons to make the request. Clearly, it's a decision of the board to fly the flags or not, but I hope that gives you a little bit of background information.
Great. Thank you both, Sarah and Tom. I'm gonna invite board questions first and then we would move on to consider the action item. Tim?
Thanks. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Tom. As Caitlin said, uh, difficult work to say the least. So really appreciate you coming here tonight. And, um, you know, I talked to my kids about this tonight before coming. You know, I have two elementary school kids. And so, um, help me, I guess, help us, you know, understand how we communicate. If, if we're using the organization and supporting the organization and part of the organization really is kind of grassroots mobilization, holding, you know, elected leaders accountable and these types of things. And so how do we begin to cultivate that message, you know, across our elementary schools? You know, so again, so the flag flies, we're supporting what it stands for. Doesn't mean necessarily agree 100%, you know, unequivocally for everything, but it's a symbol. It's, it's gonna be a prominent, uh, you know, prominent symbol in our community. So, you know, for our youngest kids, you know, how do we, you know, kind of bring that message up? You know, obviously, the older kids, the high school kids, um, you know, their things, thinking is a little bit more evolved, if not as predicated on parental guidance or teacher guidance. But anyway, I'm in support of this, you know, you know, I've done a lot of research as much as I can, um, you know, since the request came forward. But again, just my kids, you know, are, you know, nervous about the symbology and sort of the Vera reactions to it out there. And Tom, as you say, you know, how do we use it as a conversation piece?
Right, thanks. I'm gonna, um, Tom, do you want to jump in? You're welcome to. And then I'll go to Michael.
Yeah, um, yeah, that's a good question, Tim. Um, you know, and, and I guess in my mind, you know, the, the, like, we're at the rally, right? And we're in minutes of silence for the amount of time that, that policeman's knee was on George Floyd's neck. So everybody's quiet. There's 500 people there. And somebody drives by and starts honking their horn and rolls their window down and yells, all lives matter, all lives matter. And that's true. All lives do matter, but all lives can't matter until Black Lives Matter. And, and there have been too many incidences in the United States of individuals and policemen showing that Black Lives don't matter. So, you know, kind of raising the flag is raising that issue. And so I think, you know, to answer your question, like, how do you, what do we, what can we give you to talk to your kids about? You know, maybe that's a Waterbury roundabout, you know, op-ed, because we don't have kids in school, obviously, right now. Or maybe it's a blast out to the parents, you know, in our, in our communities. Now, here are a couple of talking points for kids. But that's about, that's a valid question. And do we think it's gonna be controversial? Yes, we do. Yeah.
Thanks. Michael?
I agree very much that this is how we need to sort of get the dialogue. There was another, it was a woman, I believe, that yelled, white lives matter, too. It was quieter during that rally. And I hear conversations and people seeing the, the signs bring conversations up. So I think before we do that, is this a proper time for the motion for it or, um, I guess, all right?
I'm gonna go to Tari and Kristen, just because I did invite discussion. And it certainly doesn't preclude us after, after, um, addressing the flag, because it does seem like people are focused on that, to having a broader discussion. So thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, um, yeah. And, um, yeah, we need to have a discussion and we need to push this forward. And I don't believe it's token in any way, shape, or form. I think that saying, it's saying, yeah, anything can be token and just shoving it aside. It's, oh, we need to have discussions. I hear people in the community, some people tell me, oh, this needs to be from the top down. And then I hear other ones, well, it has to come from the bottom up. Well, at least we're talking about it. So we gotta do it.
Tari, I'm gonna do, Tari, Kristen, Teresa, and then we can consider a motion.
Tom and Sarah, I just wanted to say thank you for putting your necks out there on this. And I'm grateful that there has been a lot of action in our communities, both in the schools and out. And I wondered, I think the board members have gotten letters from some teachers and staff. Are you familiar enough with some of the other things that have been happening in the district at, like, within the schools that you might share with us from teachers so that people can, you know, I think one of the comments I've heard is that it's top-down. But I, I guess I don't see it that way because I've, I've been party to some of the more grassroots stuff, even in the schools, from the teachers and stuff like that. So could you share that with people who might not be as familiar with some of that?
Sure. I believe that an email possibly was shared with the board maybe earlier today or in the last couple of days with some of the work that's been going on at the high school level. There's been huge interest and work among faculty, staff, and students in the high school, using harness discussions and sharing resources and just kind of coming up with actionable steps to take and to consider and to outreach to the broader HUUSD community. And I think you need both, that's my humble opinion. I think that you need that grassroots movement, but I think that you also need a seat and table sometimes. And so, you know, hopefully, the language of a task force will help to shine the priority on that. You know, in the fall, we had a huge focus on social emotional learning as a district this year, and part of the breakout work that happened in our fall and spring, or fall and winter, pre-COVID in-service, was led by colleagues, and we did a sampling of courageous conversations, and that work was dynamite. And so I think that bringing those good ideas and that good work together in a coordinated effort will help to make us all stronger.
Yeah, let me add to that a little bit. Crossbrook has a World of Difference, which is a group that centers the work around this theme. Ren Comper came to Warren this year to address his staff for a couple of hours in a meeting. And so I think the answer to the question is, there's been some things. I don't see it as being top-down. I see it just as being not as well-coordinated pre-K through 12 and across the schools as it could have been otherwise.
Kristen, go ahead.
So I just had a quick question. If this is all approved and the flags do fly, will the building principals kind of be sending out an email to their families just to kind of let them know about this? You know, for example, we drive by Thatcher Brook to go to Shaw's at times. So I'm just wondering if families will be given a heads-up if this is approved, that just, hey, this is why we're doing it?
Yeah, yes is the answer. You know, we haven't scripted anything yet, but it should be a common message and go out, you know, maybe the day before the flags would go up. You know, one point of consideration that we've talked about, and we don't know the answer to, because it's probably different depending on, you know, the individual, but is raising these flags, you know, what's that, what's the effect going to be on neighbors who don't agree? What's it going to be on the people of color? You know, is it going to bring some wrath upon the black and brown folks in our communities? So that's something, you know, the board should consider as you weigh a vote. We do not, you know, know the answer to that question. And is that work we should do? Go and, you know, poll before the flags go up, the people of color in our community? Maybe, maybe it is.
Thanks. Teresa? Oh, I think you're muted here, hold on. Can you go ahead?
I got it, is that me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I have a series of eight questions, they're more logistical around the task force. May I just kind of fire them off?
Sure, why don't you list them, and we'll see which ones we can address, you know, right away versus perhaps later.
So I'll just run them off before you answer, guys. So how many people will officially be part of the task force itself? How many have already been asked? And how will people be chosen to be part of the task force? What percent of TIFAR is persons of color? And how does that compare percentage-wise to the rest of the district? I'm going to say I'm glad you've changed the mission. Are community groups in the district aware that you've revised your mission and who have you been working with? I've heard from a number of constituents that the original mission caused harm and division in our district to them personally. How do you feel like you can gain their trust? What are our milestones? How will we measure success? And how will this be managed as a project?
So I also just want to make sure that, I mean, I welcome any answers that you have right now. I don't expect that Tom and Sarah have all of the answers yet. I think we typically with task forces hear the details, you know, as they evolve. And like, we just heard some of the evolving thoughts on this project. And so, yeah, maybe I'll chime in as you address what you've heard so far, Sarah and Tom. But again, I would just say that given the task force hasn't fully been formed or met, I'm expecting that you don't have full answers to all of this.
Those are all great questions, and we look forward to discovering the answers to them collaboratively and sharing those as we embark on this journey. You know, I think that honestly and humanly, we were really energized in that initial kind of like, yeah, you know, let's, okay, like, we've got this, we've totally got this. And so I think came on a little bit strong, I think, really just due to energy and excitement. And, you know, in reflecting over the past, I don't know, week or so, you know, Tom and I have met daily, and via Zoom, of course, and, you know, have really started to talk about, you know, what is manageable, what seems like it's going to be a good fit. And then also joining with other groups, you know, we attended the Waterbury Area Anti-Racist Coalition meeting last night. You know, been talking with some of my friends and community members, and, you know, just kind of thinking through how this work can come to fruition. Tom, if you want to jump in?
Yeah, yeah, some guideline or rough answers. Teresa, I think we're looking at about 14 staff members across the eight schools. So far, we've asked none. We're kind of waiting until after this meeting to start that process. I believe all of them have expressed interest through their administrators. And I think there's only maybe 15 or 16. We're trying to base the number at each school based on student population. I think there's only one or two who express interest, who are not in that group of 14. So we're going to go back to the administrators, the principals, and say, you know, here are the people who've expressed interest, or who you've nominated, you know, how does that look? And get a final call on that. Mission change, I think as Sarah said, you know, our eyes were wide, and we realized after a bit, we needed to narrow that focus, and I think that that's a good thing. We've not communicated that with the community groups as of yet. We do understand that, you know, that original press release, or what you want to call it, caused some harm. And I think, you know, to gain trust, I think it's just, you know, seeing the results of some of the work that the task force does and broadcasting it. I think that's the best we can do. Milestones, we haven't come up with that. And how it will be managed, I mean, Sarah and I will co, are co-coordinating the work. So as far as management, I'm not sure exactly what you mean by that, but, you know, I think we'll be overseeing the work anyway.
Lisa?
Yeah. So I had a few questions, I'm going to go to my notes. So the first, I wasn't sure if we were just talking about the issue of raising the flag or if this is a broader conversation, but I'll dive into all of it. But in specific to the flag, is this, is there a timeline? Are we, are we raising it and then it's going to stay up forever? Or is it going, like, is there any kind of talk around that?
Yeah, it's a good question. Like, I know in the English Premier League soccer game, it was, you know, the first 12 or 18 games of the new season. That was when they're going to take the Black Lives Matters off those uniforms. So Sarah and I briefly discussed that, and we didn't come to a conclusion on that. But if the board wants to say, you know, they can go up until X date, you know, that's the board's prerogative, I think. Teresa, one other question you asked about the percentage of people of color on the task force. Of the 14 we're considering, it would be 0%. And sadly, and I believe, and we've thought about this hard, I think we have a teacher of color and a bus driver of color, and we think of all of the staff members in our supervisory union, those are the only two black or indigenous people of color that exist in our staffs. And how that compares to the percentage in our community, I don't have that figure, but I think we probably get that.
And that kind of piggybacks on what I was going to say next, is I would really, really strongly support us as a board, I don't know how this works, but recommending that on the task force, there is, we are being led by an expert of color who's been doing this work for a long time. And I think that the reason for that is pretty clear, that it's really easy to make missteps and to do harm. And where none of us are experts, and I'm so on the beginning of my journey, I can certainly recognize that. And so I feel really strongly that we need to, A, get that leadership onto the task force from the get-go, and B, pay that person to do it. And then the third thing I want to say is that I would really, I don't know if anyone else is feeling this way, I'm uncomfortable with the term "task force." And I'd really wondering if we can reconsider that term. To me, it sounds like something that comes in at a crisis and is dissolved at some point. And I think of this as a really long-term process, so that's very complex and deep. And task force just doesn't quite match that for me. And I'm wondering if that's part of the problem with the community feeling like it's authentic. And so I just want to offer that thought.
That's interesting. Sarah and I talked about that very thing today, the, you know, just the word "force" in this thing. So we'll be talking more about that, thank you. And then about the paid consultant thing, you know, we definitely are the paid person to come in and lead the task force, if you will. We haven't talked about that. What we have talked about is when we have, you know, somebody coming in to an October in-service, or a group coming in to an October in-service, and then, you know, working with staff and professional development, or administrators, and maybe doing parent sessions, that that is the leader or the group are people of color and they're paid. So we have talked about that.
Thanks, Alex, go ahead.
I mean, I guess a couple of things. One is in terms of the flag, I would say by nature, flags are symbolic. So the idea that it's symbolic and a token is accurate, it is, that's what flags are. So, and I think there's a lot to be said for symbolism, which is why our flag carries so much weight, our national flag, people pro or con feel strongly about it. So, I mean, I completely support the idea of a Black Lives Matter flag, because I agree with you. I think it's, you know, putting some symbol of what we're trying to start and the beginning of the journey for our district, by no means the end. So, and then in the other piece, I would say the idea of whatever you're going to call it, task force. I know a lot of the community would like the focus to be purely on education. I think part of the reason we need your task force is to look at everything in our school system, from our budgeting practices to our hiring practices, to the things that you talk about not having enough teachers of color to be on this committee. Like, if we're just focusing on educating our students, we're not looking at our whole system and the racism that may exist throughout the whole system. So I think the task, whatever you're going to call it, is important to look at our, look systemically, not just at our students and what we're doing to affect them directly, but how our system as a whole might impact them. And then in terms of the ground-up piece, I mean, I want to put a plug in for the fact that there have been teachers thinking and working about this for a long time. You know, my son was in the Untold Stories class this year, and the focus of that is a lot on trying to bring different voices to the table in school that students otherwise might not have. And so there are a lot of teachers and people in our system already who are working to make changes and who may be further along on this journey than some of us are. So I don't want to, I think it's just important to recognize there's diversity in our staff and their knowledge base, as well as in our students. And there are people working really hard to make this happen.
Thanks. I want to make, oh, Kelly, go ahead, then I'm going to make a couple of comments and ask for a motion. Not that we will be done with this topic, but we would at least take our action item. Go ahead, Kelly.
Thanks, Caitlin. Again, thanks, Tom and Sarah, for stepping up and doing this important work. I know that you had said that you had about 14 staff that you were hoping to be in the committee group. Because we don't have very many people of color who are staff, would you be willing to take on any community members or families who might want to represent people of color instead as part of that committee work? Or? For feedback and stuff?
That's a good question, Kelly, and I just wrote it down. I think that is definitely something that we should discuss. A, and B, if the answer were no, like, how do you get the, how do you get the people of color's voice into that task force? Right, I think it's the same conversation with the Waterbury Area Anti-Racist Coalition and the group in the valley, too. So, yeah, but I just wrote that down for something for us to discuss.
Thanks.
So I also had a few thoughts I just wanted to share. We've been working this year, I feel like, as a board to try to make sure we're always coming back to our vision. And I do see a lot of overlap here with two key aspects of our district's vision. One is that we are aiming to provide a welcoming and inclusive environment while ensuring equity, and that we will partner with our community to achieve our vision for excellence. And I think it's without question that we have a lot of work ahead and that we are not needing that. But I do see this effort as much, as very much aligned with what we set out less than a year ago as that vision. And I think there's clearly a lot of action steps along the way. I really want to encourage anyone listening to this meeting who feels like they have ideas about what we as a board should be hearing, or perhaps even the task force leaders and what they should be hearing in terms of experiences in our schools or recommendations. I think this is a time where we're very eager to listen, and that does not mean you have to come to public comment. That can mean you're contacting someone at a school-based level, if it's a concern and a specific kind of incident that you really want to discuss. And if it's a broader topic, or if it's something that you feel like board leadership should hear, please know that we are open to those discussions and with great discretion in that, if that's appropriate. As for the flag also, I wanted to note that the ones I'm familiar with, especially in Vermont, those were student-led efforts. And, you know, I certainly applaud that. I thought that was very exciting, especially in a lot of high schools last year where they decided to fly the flag, and often groups of students came to school board and made that request. I'm also excited about this effort here, because we've heard a lot recently, especially from young people in our towns, that the adults need to step up. Now, I don't think flying the flag is the kind of action item we will ultimately need, it is symbolic. But I think that it's coming from our school leaders now and could be approved by the board is also an important symbolic step to our students to say, we don't need to wait for you to form a committee and bring us a recommendation. We want to show you that this is something we care about, and we want to show you that we want to hear from you, and we want you to participate. And so when this flag is flying at all of our campuses, I know people will interpret the message differently, but that one of the messages I hope our community members hear is, we want to hear from you, and we want all of you involved, whether you come into our buildings or whether you drive by our buildings, and certainly if you are a student or you work in our buildings. So that is my piece on this topic, and I would invite a motion on the flag so that we can consider this and move forward. And then we could move into some of the discussion, especially around our own board's efforts on this matter. Because I do want to be clear that what we've talked about so far is the task force, which is going to be school-based, and the flag item, which we're about to take up. But I certainly have a current interest in what's the role of this board and what might we consider in the near and distant future. Michael?
Thanks. I see the proposed motion there, but I think it should be, I move that we direct principals to fly Black Lives Matter flags to each of our seven HUUSD schools beginning on July 1st. My thought on that was to, the wording, just to not allow to make it non-ambiguous. But I'm willing to change the wording.
One second.
One second? Okay. Any further board discussion on the topic? Okay. Any further board discussion on the topic? Tim?
Do we need to say, you know, 90 days or I mean, do we need to, to set a, a limit on it that's, you know, somehow meaningful? It's gonna, you know, I guess the, the ask was to, to fly this over our campuses, obviously over the summer. We're not in school right now. Um, so that will, you know, that symbol will be there all summer long. Is there value in saying, okay, then we will leave it. The flags will fly for the first month of school. So the students come back to campus, um, you know, with the flag, um, you know, that's. I would expect part of the learning and growth here. So anyway, I, I just, I don't know if we need to amend that or just to say, you know, amend the language here to, to, you know, put, put a time limit on it. You know, at least at inception, I would say, you know, 90 days or, you know, something along Tom's example of, you know, you know, 12 to 18 games for English Premier League. Just a thought.
Sure. I mean, we could, one, what you're suggesting wouldn't preclude us from extending it. We could also ask the task force to bring us another recommendation um, after school has started.
I just want to make sure that the students are wrapped, you know, that it comes back around, right? You just, actually you just kind of recited, you know, the message we're giving our students. So, you know, we're just, you know, just looking for a way to incorporate that. So it's, it's part of the message.
Okay, thanks. And I, we can certainly um, entertain a amendment here. Alex?
Um, I was just going to suggest that we direct the um, the task force to consult with our community, uh, communities about what they would like in terms of the timing. I don't think we have to make that decision tonight, but we could ask that to be part of what the task force works on in conjunction with our community members.
Sure. Uh, Rosemary?
I agree with, am I unmuted? Yes. I agree with what Alex said. However, I. I'm of the opinion that um, I would like to see the flag up for a long period of time because I think one of the issues with. Racism is that an incident happens, it becomes a hot topic and then it slowly fizzles out as people get distracted with other topics. Or other issues that are going on in the world. And by, by hanging a flag, it keeps the um. It keeps the topic out there. So people keep talking about it because I think that's one of the problems is if we don't keep it upfront and visible. Then it's eventually going to go away and, and kind of be silenced. And I think that is historically what the problem has been, is our society. Let's gets, if it's not kept fresh and in front of us with, and it usually involves someone getting hurt or killed to make something like this. Important at the moment. And it's really um, something that we need to keep talking about. We need to keep in a constant conversation and not let it go away. And if we just say the flag is going to be up for 60 days, 90 days, then we could potentially fall back into that same. Pattern of making it a hot topic and then not keeping it in the front. As it, as something we need to address and change the way our society thinks.
Thanks. Um, Kelly?
Uh, I echo what Rosemary says. My vote would be to keep it up indefinitely. So um, I agree. I think it's a reminder and I don't think 90 days or the first month of school, I don't think there should be a time, a timeline on it. So.
Thanks. Teresa? Oh, we're not hearing you.
Hi. I would like to propose that we create a metric that we judge uh, of when. Schools, particular people, persons of color in our district feel safe. Maybe it's a, a thing on the climate survey and we regularly check against that metric as to whether or not we can take that flag down. And until we hit that metric, the flag stays up.
Thanks. I'm not seeing any other board hands. Um, I will go to the public if anyone would like to comment on this before we vote. We typically give two minutes per person for any comments here. Um, so like, go ahead. I think you might need to unmute.
Thank you. Folks, please, 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 please don't do this. I asked you at the beginning humility and learning. And to get from me, I've studied this for a long time. What makes something like this authentic is that it is a grassroots movement. You cannot do this from the top down. I know of a teacher who was working with a student leadership group at Harwood last year who said, hey, how about the Black Lives Matter flag? And he said, well, you can't do that because you're all white. And they brought in students of color and those students of color said, please don't do this. This will harm us. So again, we have an all-white board. I'm a white man myself. I know I've tried to explore my limitations. And it gets in my way all the time and I'm seeing it right now with y'all. I know you have good intentions. But this is the kind of stuff like the task force announcement that we're rushing to try to do something good and you're going to do more harm. All right. I would ask you to read my letter, read the blog post in there that the student group from Harwood said, this is the best resource we found on this topic. Check that out because the whole thing is about how to do this right and systemically in mitigating harm. Because a big part of this is when this shit goes sideways, the people who suffer are the people who are always most impacted by this. People of color. Those folks are the ones who will take the brunt of it. And those folks are also our greatest asset. Those are the people who have the clearest view of the situation. And you need to get them involved now before you start acting in bold ways like this. Go look it up. Standpoint theory. It tells us why people who are the most oppressed and have the worst impacts of oppression. Understand it most clearly and they have strategies for how to move forward, which again, why we don't need a task force, we could ask them. And please just don't do this. Slow down, humility and learning, please.
Thanks, life. Brenda, go ahead. Oops, I'm going to need to unmute you. There you go. Brenda, I think you should be able to.
Hi, Brenda Hartsford, and I live in Dexbury and I teach in Moretown. And I am, have been involved with the um, Peace and Social Justice Group in Burlington. And there was the rally a few weeks ago. I did not attend, but um, I was involved with um, some of that. And um, a Black Lives Matter flag was left behind and I was part of the community chat with the folks. Who are at the rally and I made a foolish suggestion um, that said, well, maybe, you know, like somebody was saying who? The police chief wanted to know whose flag it was. And I foolishly said, well, maybe um, I, I really intended, I intended good. I thought that maybe the Burlington Police Department would fly it, the flag, Black Lives Matter flag. And I immediately was jumped on by four or five black friends of mine in the conversation. Really, I mean, they were really angry at me for bringing that up and I didn't understand why. And I, of course, burdened them to try to explain to me why that would be a bad idea. And they felt it was performative in nature. They, they were so upset because they hadn't seen action yet. And they didn't think that um, it was a very good time to do that. I am very concerned that if we do that in this district at a um, without doing the work we need to do ahead of time, putting our action. That it, it may do more harm than good. And I only know that from my experience that happened a few weeks ago. I am the first one that would think, yes, let's fly the Black Lives Matter flag. But I, I think we need to look at how people of color um, in this community will receive that at this time. And that we should be asking for their input um, before anything um, is, is flown. That's just my opinion and my personal experience I just recently had. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Um, Kim, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I, I'm listening to the meeting and I appreciate the board's interest in um, trying to do something. But the idea that we would not first and foremost, before we do anything else. Include the voices of the community members who have reached out and had issues for their own children that have to do with racism. And get their input is simply unbelievable to me. I can't even imagine why we wouldn't. That's it.
Thank you, Kim. Right, I think we are ready to vote. Um, Tari, would you just read the motion again for us?
Direct principals to fly the Black Lives Matter flags at each of the seven H U S D schools beginning on July 1st.
Okay, so I'm going to go first to Alex. Alex?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what Alex said.
No.
No.
Um, I'm going to abstain.
Christine?
Can you come back to me?
Jeremy?
I'm going to abstain.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Kelly?
I'm going to abstain as well.
Kristen?
Can you come back to me?
Lisa?
I'm hearing public comment. I have to vote no.
Michael?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
Teresa?
Also in light of public comment, I'm voting no.
Thank you. Tim?
About that, no.
Tari? Yes. And back to, did I just miss um, Kristen?
No.
Okay, one, two. And Christine. And Christine, thank you. I knew I missed.
I am, I'm torn because I, I appreciate what was said during public comment, but I'm also supportive of the issue. But I'm going to abstain right now.
Okay. Um, and do I see 28.45 and 28.6? I never get my screen right here, Tari. Let's see.
That's what you see.
Thank you. Okay. Um, I am also going to abstain and so the motion will fail. So I'm going to ask that we move into further discussion on this topic because I think a lot of us are continuing to think about this. In the moment. Um, right now it is 8:11. I'm going to suggest that we give ourselves about 20 minutes more on this topic. And then we can reassess in light of a few other agenda items this evening. Um, I see Michael and then Jonathan.
So I. Let's see, it's a little bit more. I guess I'll talk a little bit about myself. My mother's Puerto Rican. She speaks to me only in Spanish. While I've never considered myself a person of color, there's some both African and Native American, I believe, no background that comes with being Puerto Rican. It's split up.
Up a little bit, Michael, just it's a little.
Let me switch my headset. Usually my headset. Can you hear me?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, so. You know, this is a big issue and, and um, things have been tough for me at different times. Nowhere, nowhere near what it's been for others. But it's, it's just, so that different people have different experiences. And I moved back to Vermont because a fellow firefighter looked at me and said, you look like a, one of those spits out in the field. Okay? It was a firefighter and I was wearing a hat. I'm Puerto Rican. I, at first I had to look up the word because, you know. Then I realized what it was. The next day I got jobs, I looked for jobs back to Vermont. So, um, you know, this is real. I look back to one of the first experiences I had on a school bus and it was dealing with, um, I got called a gringo duck. Now, why it was, that was in kindergarten, I don't know. Gringo was probably something I said because of the term, I don't think the kids would have known. It is referred to as a semi-derogatory term towards white people. Duck, maybe because of my eyes look, I don't know, but as a kid. So I, it's, it's a strong issue and we need to bring this up. We need to talk about this. I understand the, the different views and Black Lives Matter is not a united front. It's, it's a grassroots movement. There's a lot of people in that. There's a rally we did in, in town. This needs to be discussed. It needs to be action. And what I'm hearing from so many people is don't do anything till there's action. You have to do something to bring about action. So, yeah. And there, yes, there are incidences happen at school. I know we hear all the negative ones and there's a lot of the negative ones. But there's also actions where schools take responsibility and work with um, students to um, deal with the issue that happened. And work with kids so they understand better about what's going on. So I, I'm sort of, I'm disappointed here. I understand we need the grassroots movement, but we need to address this. And if we don't address it, just keep it quiet because it's going to hurt people. Guess what? It's hurting people.
Jonathan?
Uh, yeah, I'd really like to um, thank the, the public commenters. They made some really good points and it made uh, what seemed to be um, a very easy vote, very, very difficult indeed. And um, I think the point that really is, is most salient is how important it is to reach out to the community. Before taking action, uh, as part of taking action and to understand how these actions might um, affect them. Because I know um, from a friend of mine. Just sometimes the way these announcements or um, grand actions are, are perceived. Or the kind of feedback or the ripples that, that the community members receive uh, when they occur. Are unexpected or, or, or um. So I, I, I think that hopefully that can be the lesson that we take home is, is that outreach piece, that, that talking to people that are affected, people in the community. Prior to doing this, I, I, I know that I did end up voting yes, although I was um, torn right down the middle. It, it's just, um, I, it, it seems unconscionable to vote no on, on, because it's a fact that, that Black Lives Matter. And so to possibly say, you can't put that flag up now, you know, it's, it's, the optics are horrible either way. But I do want to thank the, the commenters and, and it just shows how a lot of people say, well, people talk to the board and the board never listens. And I think this time the board really did listen and hopefully we will continue to uh, be reaching out and, and listening. And hopefully that will guide our actions going forward.
Thanks, Jonathan. Lisa?
Yeah, I mean, I'll echo what Jonathan said. That was a super tough call, especially in a moment notice. Um, and I think it really, to me, just underscores that importance of having an expert who's been doing this work for a long time. It didn't touch with the effects it has on all communities at the top level of the task force. This, you know, like in an ideal world, this wouldn't be something that we're hearing from, like kind of hearing that side of this could be an effect from public comment. Um, and so I just want to make it very clear that I certainly did not vote no because I do not want to have the flag raised. I would be very interested in after the work has been done to involve people of color in the conversation, revisit this and, and raise the flag.
Thanks, Lisa. Um, let's go to Teresa and then Christine.
Yeah, I um, I really agree with this whole third-party approach. One of the things I would really like to see our district be here is self-reflective. I would really like to have an opportunity, a third-party, very private. Understand from people of color in the district or anybody that's had. understand from people of color in the district, or anybody that's had, you know, issues that makes them feel unsafe, really. What our district did well, and what can we do better? And it's not a matter of assigning blame, it is really to learn. We're in an educational environment. And I don't think that's something that can be done by the administrative team, just by the fact that they're part of it. And I, I do think there's, there is an opportunity here to learn, what could we do better, and I think that's what we, that's what we try to teach our kids, right, is like, okay, you know, even if you don't think you did anything wrong, even if you didn't do anything wrong, there's always opportunities to do things better. And then when we did something well, let's celebrate it, let's figure it out, and how do you replicate that, make it scalable, and make sure that it's something that we do all the time? You know, across every school, every single teacher, every single situation. I've heard from a number of teachers that they don't necessarily feel like they're well-equipped all the time to deal with these situations, or any kind of situation. I think it would just be really, really beneficial for our community to, to have this analysis done, and just have somebody tell us what we did well, where we could do better, and what kind of things we can implement, and then work with the task force to make recommendations.
Thanks, Teresa. Christine, go ahead.
All right, so as I said, I'm a little conflicted, and I actually, you know, I feel that some of the messages, messages that we're getting from, from the public are a little conflicted as well, because I'm hearing the same people tell us, "Don't ask, don't ask, don't ask", but then you need to ask before you do these things. So I'm not sure how we can do both of those things at the same time. And at some point, sometimes you, you do need to take stands on an issue. So sometimes you do need to, to take a step forward and, and get out there. I mean, I, you know, my thought, I know, my thinking has changed on this topic. But I guess it comes down to, for me, if, if the administrative team is united on this, and they're willing to stand behind it, and deal with, with the feedback, good or bad, that they get, I'm actually, I would, I would be willing to change my vote and support them on this. I would also be willing to suggest that we ask the task force in coordination with these two groups, the, the group in the valley, Waitsfield, and the group in Waterbury, to discuss the issue and bring back a recommendation. I don't know if that's kind of the compromise way forward, to, you know, take some time to, to listen from the, provide an opportunity for the bottom-up conversations, and then move forward with that. I don't know what the solution was, is, but I, I would, I would be willing to change my vote to a yes, if the administration continues to support it.
Thanks. Is the Alex, and then Kelly?
Yeah, I mean, I, I abstained, because I found the public comment helpful. I also want to recognize that right now we're a white board getting comments from white people, so I feel like I would find it helpful to have information from the people that this might most directly affect. And so I was thinking sort of along the lines of Christine, you know, I'm interested in the possibility of flying these flags, if it's something that people of color would have, or some people of color would find helpful. I think that, that comes to my second point, which is, I guess, you know, there are going to be lots of different opinions about what is helpful and what is not helpful, and I think we need to recognize diversity in how people might perceive our actions. And and just be aware that there are some people of color who might find this helpful, and some who might not. So, but again, since we haven't asked them, I don't think we can, as a all-white board, getting consultation from two, two white speakers necessarily make a, a great decision. I think we need to reach out to a broader community, so I would, I would support a motion that involves considering flying the flags once there's been some work with our community-based groups about whether this is something that they would find helpful or not.
Okay, thanks, Alex. Kelly?
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate what I had shared earlier with Tom, and hopes that maybe the, the team, the task force team, or whatever it is that you want to call the, the team of a group of people, reach out to some of the community members, families, parents of people of color, and have them be part of that, that group for representation and community engagement as well, and as the community voice for people of color, so.
Great, thank you, Kelly. Kristen?
Yeah, I mean, I, I voted no after I heard public comment that was really helpful. I thought it would be an easy decision, and realized that that wasn't the right decision for our district. And I think it's really important that we get the right people involved with the task force, so that we're making the right decisions, and that we're not going the wrong way, thinking that we know what is really needs to be done in our community, so I would really encourage the task force to reach out to other groups, if that's even possible, to see how to go about doing what's, what's best. If, if it comes back that, in the end, flying the flag is the right thing to do, and everybody thinks it's the right thing to do, then I have no problem voting yes again, or entertaining that vote again and voting yes. But I certainly don't want to make a mistake. This is too, there's too much at stake.
And one thing I would also suggest is that we're probably going to want to hear many recommendations from this task force, and we may have other groups that bring us recommendations, but certainly the folks in our district. In some ways, I would encourage us to let them get started and bring to us recommendations on a number of fronts, and the flag may be one, and money for training may be another, and a community event or forum, right, there's going to be a, so. I would not oppose a motion this evening, I would certainly offer that opportunity, but I also would encourage us to give these folks who are going to invest a lot of time this summer and beyond, but we might not want to narrow their focus too quickly. Rosemarie?
I, I stand by my vote with regards to the flag. I, I look at this as, obviously, there's, there's no easy solution. And hearing comments like, "It should start from the top down", or "Be grassroots and start from the bottom up", to me, it's a whole field. I think it's got to start everywhere, in our families, in the schools. We should involve students, I think, in this group. I don't like the name Task Force, because it's got too much military sound to it, in my mind. The flag, again, to me, is a symbol of, of, of a topic that we need to continue to discuss, it's got to be, it's dirty laundry that we need to air, and we need to continue the conversation. And I think the conversation has to happen at every level. And that's, that's why I voted for the flag, and I, I support the, the work of Tom and Sarah's group. I hope they involve students, because I think students should be a big part of this, since they are the next generation, and we need to help this next generation and younger to change the way they think, so maybe we can actually end racism, because the adults keep screwing it up, so we need to work with the kids so that they can, they can fix it. My two cents.
Thanks, Rosemarie. Tim, and then Tari?
Sure, I'm not, so, I'm not sure of the dynamics here, in terms, you know, the, the task force was created, you know, outside of our, you know, school board, so to speak, so. Can we, as our investment in this, I mean, and I don't believe this is narrowing the focus too early, but can we offer, you know, a third, a third party as our liaison to this task force? I'm just trying to find a way that, you know, there's some connective tissue. So, you know, we have some drive in this, and we're not just on the receiving end of, of reports and whatnot, so. I mean, I'd be interested in making a motion to, to find this third party to help us in these first steps. I mean, that's what seems most crucial, and, and again, this is not to detract at all from what's been done, and, and I'm sure this is, you know, this is a great, not a great conversation to, to have, we don't, kind of sounds almost ungrateful, you know, having, you know, Sarah and Tom, you know, sit here and talk about all they have done, and contemplated, and the enlistment and so forth, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's difficult to sort of rebuff their request tonight, and, and say, "Well, we need other people, you know, outside of their expertise", but I think that seems to be where we are, you know, and, and I would make such a motion to, you know, we've made other motions to help us, you know, you know, PR firms to, to try and sell a, a bond project, so I think we seem to be in that very particular position right now, where I don't think anybody on this board is in the universal agreement that, you know, who says which way to go here, but, you know, if we're asking for this task force to reach out into other grassroots organizations and so forth, it sounds like a, a tall ask, if we're not going to back it with some sort of, you know, financial commitment.
Yeah, and I would say.
Yes, that is a motion. I make a motion to hire third-party professional facilitation for our anti-racism task force.
So before, just before I take a second, and I will, I just want to make a couple points that I think we also do want to think about our own fall planning, and some of the work that our board might do, again, facilitated, and that that could be a coordinated effort. I wanted to just also echo the, or address the idea about the task force language, which I, I understand the problematic term, I think I want to make sure that people are clear that typically a school district uses that term fairly generically, anytime a major topic or a project is underway that's district-wide, and so we've seen one for social emotional learning, and we've seen one recently for literacy in our district, and we've had them in the past on other topics, in other instructional areas, as well as other bigger initiatives. So that's a context piece, and I would say that typically those task force, unless they are a task force of the board, aren't, you know, approved or always directed even by us. I do hear interest in us being involved, and Tim, I hear you saying, you know, putting some financial backing in it to say, "We care about this, and we want it to be real, and we want it to be supported." So I can take a second on the motion, then we can discuss the motion specifically. I do see a number of hands.
I'll take a second, I'll second.
I'm going to go to Bridget, oh, yeah, Bridget, and then Tari.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to add a little bit of information and some context around task force, I think that's a great segue that Caitlin led to. And it's a typical term, it's a, it's a structural term, the group can certainly rename once they form, and they have members, and they can rename, but sort of like that technical school way, it's done, you know, we have a task force on literacy, we have a task force on social emotional learning, and why you use those, it has to do with the decision-making, and the way things actually move to a school board for funding and for budgeting. So for example, we don't have any money for any of this budgeted. And as you know, we don't have our membership, the group hasn't come together to meet, so we don't know what our asks are yet. We, we know that we'll be looking at an October-ish, we're hoping October, to have a keynote person of color, an expert coming in to do some training, we brainstorm, we're only at the brainstorming level, the three of us and the admin team on, on some good ideas. I certainly support, and we all would support, receiving that expertise, but we don't know what our asks are, so I just wanted to share that the task force is just a typical school district structure to get something like this started. Then what happens next is the group will make a proposal and some recommendations, and each of those will need to come to the board. So for example, the members that sit on the task force that are staff members would typically be paid a $50 hourly stipend for their participation. And we don't have that money budgeted, so once we figure out the membership, we calculate that, we will need to come to you for your approval of that expenditure, and Michelle will help us figure out where we might be able to get that money. Right now, I'm looking to see if there's any grant funding, I'm also looking to see if there's any sort of coalition money that we might be able to get from the AOE that could apply in an effort to help, help to support the board to do that. So we're just really a neophyte, haven't met, don't know our asks yet, but all of those asks would be coming before the board. Thanks.
Great, thanks. Tari, did you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I, I guess I, it's been a really thought-provoking conversation this evening, and I am grateful to both the principals who made the presentation, as well as the public who disagreed with their conclusions in this case. And I wanted to share a couple of ongoing thoughts as, as we, as I've been listening. One is just to share that this idea of grassroots versus not, I have been really struck watching my kids and their friends get really, really engaged in this issue, and I have found it deeply inspiring, and I have been trying to learn some new ways to frame my own thinking and my own learning, and I've just seen how passionate they are about this, so I think that was part of the reason I've been excited to see then our principals take up the mantle, and also, I got a letter from, I believe it was all the middle school, and maybe all the high school teachers, talking about wanting to really begin to engage in this, sharing some resources with parents. So I've been really excited to see what our district is doing, and the way I have understood it is almost like planting a flag metaphorically, to say, "We care, and we're ready to ask some questions, and we're ready to learn more." I think part of the challenge maybe tonight is that sense of urgency that we're, many people are feeling. I know my kids are feeling, and I, as a member of our community, I'm feeling. And I think that urgency causes us to want to find solutions. And I think maybe what we're hearing as well is, don't rush to a solution. And take time to ask more questions first, and ask questions of lots of people, and have them come from different sections of society, have them, have had different experiences in our community. So I do feel like that, that sense of, that tension between urgency and wanting to make a difference, and the need to be intentional and almost ma, I feel like what I'm hearing from the public is saying, "You have to actually slow down. You do have to engage, but you have to, you have to slow down and, and ask some different questions." So then when I, if I circle back to this motion to hire a third-party facilitation, I do think that that should be something that we would be ready to consider, but I would prefer, at this stage, to wait until we've asked a few more questions and heard a few more answers before we did that, but I love the idea of us as a board being ready to dig in and find some money to pay for what it's going to take. I mean, you can't throw money at a problem, but sometimes it takes investing in research, investing in conversation and dialogue, and maybe that's staff time, maybe that's speakers, maybe that's new curricular materials, but I, I think the idea of us getting, being ready to support that when the ask comes is great, and I, in terms of this motion, I feel like maybe it's a little premature to just have this be our solution at this time, that we could just keep listening for a bit longer, if that's what we're hearing. Thank you.
Thanks, Tari. Christine?
Yeah, so just to piggyback on what Tari was saying, there's, you know, kind of a rush here, and we really haven't fleshed out this motion, or fleshed out the need, or, you know, what, what this would entail, and I think it's, we're getting to a little two, two-bit top-down. And I'm also just thinking that procedurally, this is what we're trying to avoid, right, like that Like that spur-of-the-moment motion that we know needs more thought and more decision or more, more discussion, uh, more information. It's, you know, certainly something that, um, I, I'd be willing to support, but I don't know right now what the, you know, if we were to issue an RFP, what it would be focused on. Um, and I don't know that the task force has identified what the need is specifically. So I guess I would actually, um, move that we postpone this until our August retreat or our first meeting, um, so that we could have a little bit more, uh, meat and, and direction with where we're going on this discussion and the need and the funding.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we would be moving to postpone this motion to our next meeting, um, which would be August 26. I heard, or the retreat, um, does that capture, which has not been scheduled necessarily? So, um, does that capture it for now, Christine?
Yeah, I was just making assumptions that August 26 might be our retreat, but-
Okay. Um, any discussion on, wait, I want to make sure I'm not out of order here on my rules. Tari, can I allow discussion on the postponement?
Christine, do you remember? Yeah, I didn't bring my stuff in with me. I'm sorry.
I think we can discuss the postponement if anyone wants to, um, chime in on that piece. Um, I do see Tim.
Yeah, I was just more declaring. I, I'm fine with, with postponing it is, you know, as we come right back to it. And I think really just one more clarifying thing. There's a forensics piece, I think, to, to this that, you know, we've discussed, uh, tonight that, you know, there are stories, there are, you know, people, you know, some of it's anecdotal, whether or not any of it's formalized or not. I really think that's the purview of the task force. Um, so if we really want to assure ourselves as the school board that, um, we see, uh, you know, all of the dark corners, you know, again, I think, you know, that's part of the expertise that could, you know, be started on right now, you know, irrespective of what the task force is doing is, you know, getting into the forensics of, you know, what we are being told the problem is, where there are, are issues, whether or not any individuals want to step forward. So anyway, it's, it's more forensics, but I, I'm, I'm fine postponing the discussion until a later day.
Caitlin, can I ask a point of clarification?
Totally. Go ahead.
Um, so what Tim just suggested is different than the motion that is, that we're discussing. If we postpone this motion, can we change it? Or should we change it or should we ask him to change it before we have the decision to postpone it?
So I would say first, um, the, there is discussion on postponing. So I'm saying that out loud so you can all help me the next time. Um, and I would encourage us to vote on the postponement, keep that motion on the table. Um, we can, uh, or Tim is welcome to withdraw it if he sees something different. Move into our fall planning discussion. I think what you're talking about as well could be relevant. I don't know that we'll spend as much time on that this evening, but we do know that we, we're hearing a lot of similar ideas and topics that should guide both our district work and certainly our board work coming into the early fall. Um, so I think there's room for both. Um, is there any other comment just on the postponement of the motion? Alex?
Um, yeah, I, I guess, um, I feel like in relation to this motion, one of the pieces I heard loud and clear from, um, the community feedback was the idea of slowing down a little bit and having some humility, um, which I appreciate. I also appreciate the, um, willingness of our principals to jump in and lead this, um, task force because I think it's, um, a scary task. And I think here we are in our armchair quarterback positions being able to say, okay, well, maybe that isn't a good idea and maybe slow down, but I don't envy them in the position of trying to sort this out. So, um, I would just say, I, I think to make decisions about facilitators or money or anything like that, again, we're just going to be repeating what just happened with the flag. So I would encourage us to slow down as a board and to let our task force get them feet on the ground, start talking to our communities. And, um, again, I think the ground-up approach is going to bring us, um, a more genuine and authentic way of looking at this. And, um, from there we can move on to what we as, how we as a board can support our administrators and our communities in making some progress. So I support the postpone.
Teresa and then Lisa.
Um, I'm okay with postponing this particular motion, but I would like some action to come out of this meeting. Um, you know, maybe it's research of what we would want it to look like or what we would be doing. The reason why I'm asking and why I'm saying that is because we get into August 26 and we say, we want to hire a professional, then there's got to be an RFP created and then there's be an RFP suggested. And, you know, we've got to kind of take this in. We're into October, November by the time somebody actually comes in. You know, we're, we're six months away from that right now, right? And so if we don't take action now, tonight, in some shape or form, I'm worried that this just kind of gets buried and next thing you know, we're in budget.
Lisa?
I just keep going back to the fact that I don't think that this work can really get started without the community that it's affecting involved. And so, and I think it has to be third-party. Um, not that community, like, community can't also be part of that, but there has to be somebody who's an expert, lead, expert leading us. And if we go into the summer and give it two months to get the task force off the ground so that they can start talking to the community, I don't know if they know how, what questions to ask. I mean, it's just, it's, it's all super complex and new and we don't really know what we're doing. So I think from the get-go, we need a leader who does know what they're doing. And so that's why I don't support postponing it.
Thanks, Lisa. Any other, um, comments before we vote on postponement? Kelly?
Well, I guess the action that I would, I, I would, uh, be willing to take is that the, um, the task force, um, integrate community members of color, uh, into their group and, um, that way there's more engage, more community engagement and, um, uh, collaboration happening. And not just have it be admin.
Gotcha. Um, all right. I think we are ready to vote on the postponement then. So, um, I will just call the names for this vote and, um, the, the motion is just to postpone the motion to our next meeting, August 26 or the retreat. So I'll go to Alex first.
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lisa?
No.
Michael?
Yes.
Rosemarie?
Yes.
Teresa?
No.
Tim?
No.
Tari?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so that will carry. And I would say what I want to check on right now is it is 8:44. Um, I have heard interest in other action this evening and so I would want to invite that. Now, I would encourage us to think about some relation to our own fall planning. And one of the things that Tari and I can be doing right away is considering our own facilitation of a meeting slash retreat in the late summer, early fall. Typically we do have a retreat. It's often on board goals and roles and responsibilities and, um, identifying our priorities for the school year. It seems like we have a great opportunity to use much of that time perhaps this year on this topic, or at least to pursue that further. Um, so I would certainly suggest that we consider that and, um, we can do some more logistical surveying around fall planning as well over the summer. But I would say right now, if anyone wants to make a further motion on this topic, I think we need to do so because we do have one other pretty big item of business tonight. So Lisa, go ahead. Oh, no. Okay. Teresa?
I would, uh, like to make a motion that we explore, um, over the summer, what an RFP would look like for, to bringing in a third-party to do the forensics and, uh, help the task force facilitate.
Okay, Tari, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Tari, do you want to put that up and make sure Teresa, you can make sure that she's got that? And then I see Christine, um, do you want to go ahead? We can go back to the word smithing if we missed something.
Yeah, I mean, I was just going to make a point of order. This is not something that was on the agenda and I feel we're going down a rabbit hole at 8:47 and it, and it feels a little, um, disingenuine. One, that we're just trying to do something to do something. Um, and we had something on the agenda we could have chosen to do and we didn't chose, choose to do it. So if this isn't on the agenda, we shouldn't be moving it to action tonight. So I would actually ask that we, you know, it, it, that we either move on in the agenda and, and pick this up at a later date. Um, so, you know, i- i- this isn't just, I just don't, I mean, we're, we're not effective and part of the problem is that we're now past our procedures of having a discussion on one evening and then having an action item that's properly worn on another evening, or at least having the action item properly worn on our, on our agenda. And that hasn't been done. So it's, it's a little bit frustrating and I'd ask us, we should, we should, as a point, as a point of order, we shouldn't even be going here right now.
Um, I do hear you and even as I was asking for the motions, I, I had that, yes, I had that concern. I think, um, I'm also concerned about the timeliness factor and if there is interest in anything over the summer, um, this is the time to do so. I would feel more comfortable if we had another meeting in two weeks. But I would say right now it's 8:51. I would encourage us to have as brief a discussion as we can on this so that we can vote it before 9:00 PM. So I would go to Bridget first and any other board members. But again, I'm going to limit discussion pretty significantly, um, in order to, to continue and move on this evening.
Could I ask Teresa to send me the language that she would like in the box because I don't have it yet?
Okay, thank you, Tari.
Thank you.
Thanks, Caitlin. Um, I certainly have been doing a lot of listening tonight and what I can, um, take away from this is this has been some really good dialogue, some of the best that I think I've seen, in my opinion, um, that our large 14-member board has been able to have. And, um, it's, it doesn't go unnoticed. I appreciate it and it, it feels pretty good actually. In thinking about this motion, I would like you to answer the question of who, when you word the motion? And I'd like you to consider that it would be the board that would explore the RFP. It seems like based on the information, um, and some of the thinking tonight, um, it might be best placed with the board rather than the administrative team. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Bridget. Alex?
Yeah, I mean, I think this motion brings a whole new, um, element that isn't warranted, isn't, we haven't talked about, about, I'm not even sure exactly what it means with forensics. So I, I don't feel comfortable. This is like a whole different discussion. And, uh, I, I don't feel comfortable voting on this. And again, I think if, if we are listening to what we heard, it was slow down and, and I don't think any of these actions that we're taking are slowing down. So I, I, I don't know why we keep trying to, to do something. I mean, I do, I get it. Like, we're, we're in this really, um, this time where people feel like they need to act. But I think what we're hearing is that we are hurting people when we act. So I think the best way to not do that is for everybody to slow down a little bit and take some time to think about what we're doing.
Any other board comments before we vote?
Yeah, um, I, I would just say, um, this isn't a very strong action. I don't see how anybody could be hurt or by doing some exploration and study of what an RFP might look like. So, um, that's all, that's all I have to say. It, it seems like a, a, an incremental action just to prepare in case we decide to go in that direction.
Gotcha. Thanks, Jonathan. Teresa?
Um, I disagree with Alex. I, I think we are hearing that people want us to do something. Um, it's just not fly the flag. And by the way, you know, I've been in contact with probably most of the people that Maureen, uh, was citing at the beginning of this call and two of them texted me after I voted no and the vote got it down and said, "Thank you." So I, I think people want action in this district. Um, I think we just, they want us to start being thoughtful and start making a plan. And this is investigation that needs to be done in order to make a plan. It's not doing nothing, but it's also not doing something that's impacting. It's exploratory, it's discovery. That's what this is about.
Okay, thanks, Teresa. Um, Michael?
Right now, actually, now I have the wording. Yeah, I, um, I guess in response to what Teresa said, I would really like it if we as a board can actually hear from people. If, if the board members that are talking to people that have these concerns, these problems, these things that come up, if you could encourage or ask or, or, well, it's really hard to obfuscate anything in a small community, but like if there's some way I can go out so that we have things that says, so, so we're all working on the same facts here. I, I, I just think that's really good. So I want, I, I really want to hear it. And I think we're at the, yeah, this is playing to plan to plan, slow down, go fast, top-down, bottom-down. If that's grassroots, then we should absolutely nothing. Um, right? Because we're the top. So I, I'm just, I'm just really, I'm, I guess, I'm, I'm angry about the tire thing, the tire situation, not just what we're in, the tire thing. But, uh, I don't know what to do. I really don't know. And I wish some people actually, some more people would talk to us about what to do. Because I thought I heard a message loud and clear at the rally, but, um, apparently I'm being told it's wrong now. So I don't, I do.
Okay. Um, thanks, Michael. Bridget?
Mike, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I did unmute. Um, again, back to the kind of conversation that we're having tonight. I, I guess what I would want to share as you're sort of closing down this part of your agenda is that, um, you know, the administrative team, and I think Sarah commented on this, we, we felt such passion and we just wanted to get started. And we're, no, we know we're going to make mistakes. And we'd like to be able to grow and learn and do better, apologize for the mistakes and keep going. So we are all white and we are going to make mistakes and we don't know. But we felt really compelled, um, to get started. And I think where maybe there will be some confusion and, um, if the board could consider, I realize it's the last meeting and we might not be meeting till August, but maybe everything should just be put on hold until the board can direct the administrative team, until you can really have a thorough conversation, um, you know, and, and set some goals and set some direction if, if you really wanted to come from there. Because I think that there's going to be a lot of differences of opinions. It's hard to really find a way, a pathway to get started. And I know some of the confusion that we have talked about is how do you define community? And how do you define community in one of the whitest states, if not the whitest state in the nation? So, you know, we were thinking more broadly around community as meaning the state of Vermont as a community. And an example would be at CVU, for example, their district is flying the Black Lives Matter flag at all of their campuses. So, you know, we probably should have done better tonight at explaining some of the context of where those pieces came from. The UVM Medical Center and the UVM campus are flying Black Lives Matter flags. So when you say check in with the community and people of color, I guess we need more direction. Is that just people of color that live in our six towns or people of color more broadly throughout the community state of Vermont? And, um, we certainly can put everything on hold. That, that might be another, another approach to go for until the fall.
Thanks, Bridget. Um, any other- Any other board comments before we vote? Okay. Teresa, would you read the motion just to make sure that we have it before we vote?
Caitlin, does the community get to weigh in on this one?
This? I don't think so. This is a subcommittee task work of the board.
Okay. Subcommittee of the board to do pre-work for RFP regarding bringing a third party to do forensics and support the task force so it can be ready in the fall.
Thank you. All right, Alec?
I'm standing.
Alex?
No.
Christine?
No.
Jeremy?
Stayed.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes, sorry. Thank you.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rosemary? Teresa?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Tari? No. All right. That will carry. What I would suggest now, it is nine o'clock. I would encourage, I think what Tari and I would like to do is do some fall planning work via survey with the board and that would include anyone interested in this subcommittee work that would be, I think, a pretty brief project over the summer, but we would see. And Alex, do you have a comment before we move on to the other agenda items?
Yeah.
You're muted again. You muted instead of unmuted.
I'm just confused that we just tasked the board to do something when we don't meet over the summer. So I'm wondering, the people who voted yes, are they volunteering to be on the committee? Because I just, I'm confused how this, logistically, what this means.
I do think that what we'll need to do is put that out to the board and in terms of logistics, that's something that we can, we can address in terms of people's willingness to volunteer and their time availability. I think the way the motion is worded, it doesn't necessarily require a lot of summer work like the K to twelve plan and it would potentially put us in position for some of the work we may need to be diving into in the fall. That's what I see here. But with that, I would say it is now nine o'clock. I think I want to just briefly go into the communications and board feedback and hear about people's willingness to use the, use any time or extend our time for another executive session this evening. So first, I would say if there's any communications items beyond the board recap, which we, you know, continue to do as an enhanced recap with some explanatory language and we've had at least four board members looking at that, this would be the time to indicate any further communications that you would suggest coming out of this meeting. Jeremy?
Yeah, I would just suggest that we communicate in some way that the board votes tonight that were, you know, essentially to slow down the process of incorporating the Black Lives Matter flag and other aspects of that movement into our immediate plan. We're not board votes to dismiss that movement and that they were votes to open up our ears, do some listening, do some learning and to go forward with a thoughtful plan rather than a reactive plan. And so I think that if the best we can do to reflect the fact that we did some listening to a few community members that spoke tonight, but also some of the correspondence we got over the last couple of weeks rather than an outright dismissal. I know that we tend to stick to the facts when we throw those correspondences out because that's, that's an important piece of this. I just think the nuances of this discussion were so much deeper than to report that the board voted no to fly the BLM flag and I think that that needs to be communicated in a really thoughtful way.
Important point. Go ahead. I just talked over someone. All right, anything else on communications? How about, oh, and you know what I want to do actually, because I always end up moving on so quickly and I know we're moving along on a number of things. I just want to again thank Sarah and Tom both for coming to us tonight for all their preparation, all their work on this that I know will be continuing and continue to evolve and look different. But Sarah and Tom, please, thank you again and we're going to look forward to hearing from you and I really hope that our boardroom is a place where you feel comfortable bringing recommendations, bringing challenges to us and that we will continue to support this work, knowing that that may not mean we're always approving every recommendation, but that we are hearing your recommendations respectfully, asking careful questions and continuing to support the overall efforts in our district in ways that you can carry back to your teachers and staff and students. So I consider this the first of many conversations when you'll be joining us and I hope that is, continues to be productive for all of us and especially for our communities. So with that, I wanted to move on to any board feedback folks would like to share this evening before we, Kelly?
Yep. Hi, thanks. So I was wondering if there is an email that folks can email that only goes to board members and not to administration? So the email that is the all copies admin on that as well. So is there?
There's two answers to that. I would say one is someone can always put in whoever they want, whether it's fourteen board members or two board members. So until recently, that's what people did. They actually typed in all fourteen board members' names if that's who they wanted to only address. The other thing I would remind everyone of is that almost any email that any one of us sends is public. And so while I think we all use our best discretion, we also have had many FOIA requests and those emails, unless they contain very confidential information, often end up in others' hands. So that's, those are the two points I would make in particular. I know we've talked a lot about tonight hearing from community members and I think that reminds me to mention two things. I think the type of communication that is most important for the board to hear is around, you know, recommendations and suggestions to us or points to consider or questions, whether it's to us as individuals and what you heard us say or to the board in general. When we do hear things like complaints of potential issues in a school or incidents, we do have very clear policies about how those kind of complaints are handled and they do sometimes come to the board eventually. The concern is that sometimes if a complaint comes to the board too quickly, then we are not able to fulfill our ultimate role if we do see a complaint come up a chain of command. So all that to say that both to board members, when you receive, say, a complaint or an anecdote that concerns you, the more that we can direct our constituents to people who can first address them, the better. That said, I also understand that there are folks who may not feel comfortable with a number of parties that they may want to address a grievance to. I think board members, if you have questions about that, I would certainly encourage you to contact me directly and I will do my best to get those kind of answers to you. And to community members, if you're also not quite sure and you want to start with me and say, hey, I have something that I think I need to discuss and I'm not sure where to start, I certainly encourage you to reach out to me and I will direct you as appropriate. But again, I would say the best correspondence that goes to the full board is really things that come in that, you know, reaction, recommendation, question category because those are the kinds of things that we can most immediately consider. Enough for me on that for the moment. Lisa?
I just want to say that I'm really glad we're doing this work and I think it's really hard and can feel really confusing and I really hear Michael and can identify with that feeling of like, I just don't, I literally don't know what we're supposed, what the right answer is. And I think that that's okay and that I really appreciate that the board is kind of going through the process of listening and course correcting and like keeping a sense of urgency as well as slowing down and being deliberate. And it's like a lot to try to get right and I'm just going to say that if we're doing it and I think we'll get there. But it won't be messy. But yeah, I'm just really glad we're doing it.
Thanks, Lisa. Yeah, this is, this is not the last time this will be on the agenda. Let's see, it is one we will be returning to many, many times in the years ahead. Teresa?
I want to react to the first two comments tonight. My own, the first one is around what Kelly brought up. It didn't really even occur to me. You know, the public probably doesn't know that the admin, some of the admin are included and I don't know, it just seems a little deceptive. So I think we might want to consider one that is very obviously includes admin and one that is really just truly to the board. I get that they're all public, but I think it matters what the, I think, or at least our responses are, but I do think it matters to the public to know who they are because it's not like in an internal email where you can click in and see who you're including in this group box. So it just, it just feels a little concerning to me that I didn't even know that was the case, honestly. The second thing I did want to talk about Lisa saying, I'm also very proud of it. I think it is the work we should be doing. I'm very excited about it. I agree with Lisa and with Michael that it is very confusing and we just need to listen and figure it out, but I always believe in bringing in people who are experts in this kind of stuff and I'm excited about that. The third thing, which is, you know, I'm just going to keep saying it. I think on the K to twelve plan, I think we're over our skis. And I heard Alex tonight say, you know, well, we'll ask the admin team to do it. They're going to do the work. How do we know, do we even know we're asking the right questions? And then there's a lot of questions that I really believe should be answered holistically that the admin team doesn't have expertise in and, you know, the macro, microeconomics of the, of the community, right? Like things like that, I mean, it's just not even fair to do them and I just, I really, I'm going to keep on saying, I think we need to bring in a third party because I think that's what's best for our students and our student outcomes. I do not think we doing this work is best for our district and the students and the student outcomes. So just going to keep saying it, guys.
Okay, thanks, Teresa. Alex?
I guess I'm I'm discouraged to hear people saying they wish that the community could email the board without the administrative team having access to that because whatever problems they're emailing to us need to get fixed by the administrative team. And I feel like it's one, if a community member has a concern, they're worried about bringing to the full board, they can approach an individual board member and talk to the individual board member or two. But if you're at the point where you're emailing the entire board about a problem, I would hope and expect that the admin team would be included because if it's that significant, they should know about it. They're the ones that will have to work on fixing it. So I, I just, I think we should be working on how to help people feel safe to ask their questions and talk to people and, and how to make the administrative team feel like a part of our team. I feel like we're, we can't operate without them and to try to separate them completely from ourselves is going to make us a really dysfunctional district. They are the people who run our schools. So I'm just discouraged at the idea that we should be trying to separate ourselves from them and then our community from them. I really want to see us moving towards working together as a group, not separately.
I see a few hands from some folks who have spoken, so I just want to make sure if anyone else wants to chime in that they have a chance to do so. I'm going to wrap it up in the next two minutes. Christine?
Yeah, I just want to second that. We as a board have a responsibility to encourage people to follow our policies regarding concerns that they have with the schools and what's going on, whether it's, you know, a classroom, a school, a teacher, a program, that's, that's not stuff, we're chiefly charged with policy and budgeting. And they need to work through the people that can best address the problems. And as you were saying, people also need to realize that there is a chain of command and sometimes those problems come up to us and we can't act as, in our judicial role if we've got knowledge of these issues too early in the process. And we do need to work as a team with our administrators. They're the ones that provide the work to us and quite frankly, they're the ones that know our district best. So bringing in a third-party consultant, the first thing that person would have to do would be taking the time to learn about our district and they'd have to.